Welcome, everyone, to the September 14th Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome to all our guests here today. Thank you for being here and welcome to everyone at home. The first, I first should tell you a couple of things. Councilor Polling is not with us today. He's having a little surgery. Councilor Zelenka, I believe, is on the phone. Is that right? No?
We'll hear the beep.
He's on? Oh, that's right. He has to switch from, yes, he's on the phone. Okay. And there is a day, let's see, September 20th at 9:00 on Tuesday, we're going to be welcoming a delegation from our sister city in Kakagawa. And if you can come, would you please come to my office to welcome them at 9:00 on the 20th? There is a six-person outband delegation that will be going to Kakagawa in October, going the other direction. The second item I want to share with you is that we are participating in a day of curing, and they wanted to try to see if we could get some of us to participate in the city's contingency. And so that one is, Chris has got some interest in this, no doubt.
A little bit.
This is on Wednesday, September 21st. United Way would love to have a team of the mayor and councilors participate. Since it falls on the Wednesday council meeting days will be especially challenging. They're open to having our team participate on a different day if that makes it more possible. Let's see, they have a few project possibilities. So anyway, Jan's working on that, and she asked if you would like to do that. She had three days that she sent you. Is that right, Jan? We're still looking at the dates. If you would contact Jan and if you're willing to participate and let her know whether from 9 till 11:30 or noon, either on the 20th, the 21st, or the 22nd.
I'm like, if we, if we have this Kakagawa delegation.
Yeah, right. So that would be, that would be the 21st and the 22nd, right? Just let you know, Jan?
Yes, please. Just let me know if there's any interest at all available to lay in.
Right? This sort of falls into what we do at the beginning of this meeting, and that's our committee reports and items of interest. And I'm going to do a, Mike asked me if I would do the report on the police commission. We both are on that. And so I'm going to give you a brief report on the police commission. Actually, we've got a police commission member out in the audience here. She does lots of things. Anyway, we welcome new commissioners onboard. The police commission's been dealing with outreach over the closure of the Monroe Station. And they just done a series of meetings, and then they came forward with recommendations for things that they would like to see happen as that closure happens and the transition to be made. And I can tell you those recommendations if you're interested. These recommendations have been passed on to the chief, and the chief has already been acting on some of those recommendations. They also worked on bylaw changes. I can also share a copy of that with you if you would like. They've been doing committee work on search and seizure policies, and I'd be glad to share that information if you'd like it. And they're also getting input from the auditor on the search and seizure policies. So that's pretty much what the commission has been up to. It's a great group of people, and they work really hard. And I guess at each meeting, the chief also does a presentation of sort of what's happening in the city of Eugene since the last meeting, and where the hotspots are, and how we're responding to those issues. And I guess I would say that we are still struggling with property crimes, but systematically making headroom. So, anything else?
We started a citizen police academy.
Oh, yeah, so we started a citizen police academy, which I'm going to. I didn't have enough meetings to go to, so I just thought I'd add a few hundred more. No. Went to the first police, and so did Caitlin back here, last night, and it was really interesting. And I have to say, as I always hear people are, I was very impressed with the presentations. They were very, very well-done, and last night's was a wonderful kind of discussion of the, what we go through when we try to hire officers, which is a big elaborate process to get the very best. And also about the duties and overview and some of the equipment. That was kind of the, that was like a three hours of pretty high-level discussion last night. So I've enjoyed that very much and appreciate the opportunity to participate. So, George, you have something you want to add to this?
Well, I have a.
Watershed?
From the watershed, yeah, Mackenzie Watershed. I'll just keep fairly briefly. The Mackenzie Watershed Council is going to be participating with the County of Wastewater Management Commission on a ecosystem restoration and regulatory credit project on Cedar Creek and the Springfield Mill Race. And the wastewater management commission unanimously decided to award a contract to Freshwater Trust up to, an amount up to $450,000 to contact to provide the services. It's a 24-year, and Mackenzie Watershed will be participating, mainly in the landowner area. It's going to take four years to talk to all the landowners along Cedar Creek. The Mill Race, of course, won't take that long, but it will take quite a while to contact all the landowners and get their permission to plant trees. It's got woods and all of it. The idea is to shade the water. That will lower the temperature. The wastewater commission will be able to get credits from the, the DDQ. Freshwater Trust, their proposal said, "If you don't pass until it's paid," for the 24-year project. So they don't want to be paid until they have an invoice to the commission to fill the trees around the ground. That's going to be four, five, six years from now. But it sounds like a lot of money, but really, it's a good project, and it'll be a good benefit to the river, quality of the water in the river, and the wastewater management commission. They won't be paid until the DDQ says yes to the job, and the commission is eligible for the jobs. So it's, and the DQ will be secured by the land. The money is going to come from the worked-out-of-deal state revolving loan fund. They have a loan for the tertiary filtration system. So instead of paying back the interest on that loan directly to the fund, it gets to go to the support. So it's a good, great creative use of.
George? Betty, you want to talk about the Lain-Metro Partnership?
No, nothing to do about that, but I have some other things.
Go around after we get to the committee.
Okay.
And Lain-Metro Partnership?
This is Alan. I joined the conference call.
Hey, nice to hear your voice, Alan. Go ahead.
Nothing to be reported.
Okay, nothing on the Lain-Metro Partnership. The other one we have for this month is the Oregon Metropolitan Planning Organization Consortium, or UMPAC. And you needed another acronym.
Yeah, it's a new acronym, too.
And what I would say, that's an organization of all the policy, kind of quality planning organizations from around the state. I'm the representative from our organization to that larger body, and I chair it. And we had a really great presentation on all of ODOT's various transportation planning processes and kind of an update on all of the things that are going on. Only thing I'll pick out of that to mention is all over the state, there is an issue about, and here too, about redundancy, like when you only have one way to get out of your, where there is, there are not multiple ways to, in case of redundancy, that people can move. And that can happen when you only have one bridge that goes over. That can happen if you only have one major highway, and there's no parallel way for people to, so that's an issue all over, all over the state that they're grappling with. And that's an interesting one, and I actually haven't really thought about, although we're kind of talking about that with water, too. So it's, that means another way to meet the basic needs of the community. Any other major committee or commission reports anybody wants to, has anything they want to say about? Otherwise, I'll just go around and do a quick hit on what we've all been on break. So hopefully, people have actually, some of us have actually been on break and got some time off. I would just mention for my part that we had a great Eugene celebration during break, and it was fun. And the mayor's art show was fun. And this Friday is the teen, mayor's teen art show at Maude Kearns, and that's where our young people get to have their artwork exhibited, and they get people to get awards and encouragement for what they do. So stop by Maude Kearns to see the teen art show if you have a chance. And that's all. And then I actually probably should mention, because I think they're so cool, and George will probably mention it anyway, but the new bike parking, what do you call those? The?
Cracks.
Cracks.
Corral, bike corral.
Bike, the bike corrals, which are, in our case, functional and artistic as well. And if you have not been by to see, there's one really great one by the train station in front of Morning Glory. And there's another really fine one by that excellent store down there called Hiva.
I heard about that.
That's another wonderful piece of progress in our community for biking. So that's all I got for right now. Betty, you want to?
Sure, a few things. I attended the Pearl Street Block Party, which was really fun, interesting, and it was a hot day, though. But there were quite a few people there this morning. I went, as many, several other people did, to commemorate 9/11, commemoration of the fire station. I thought that was extremely well-done. Southeast New York had their annual picnic on Sunday, where I tried to give away John's last cat. And I went, I just want to remind people that we have a public hearing on the exclusion of dogs from the area of 13th and Alder next Monday. And if people don't like the idea that they can't walk there with their dogs on leash, they should show up at the hearing. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I was late. So I did spend my time on break. I did a lot of family stuff. We had a wedding that we attended for one of the young men that were in our lives, and actually had a passing of another young person who was in our lives. I attended the Latino Business Network. They did a gathering, they meet monthly. We were at Next Step last night. I also attended the 9/11 ceremony, and I agree, it was very well-done. I was invited to sit in on one of the listening circles with the police officers in the Latino community. It was, it was pretty good, actually. I felt really inspired and hopeful. So I was pretty happy about that. I had some teeth work done. I think that's about all, Mayor. I think there was a lot of little things we did, but...
Seems like there's something all the time, doesn't it?
Yeah, there's always something going on.
I remember all.
And the only thing I want to kind of highlight, I don't know if we'll have an opportunity again, but I hope that people have, the community has signed up to go to the Neighborhood Summit that's going to be on the 24th at North Eugene. So I hope that there's a good turnout of community. I know Train Song's excited about going, and I'm assuming there'll be representation from Bethel and people from the Whittaker and different parts of the community. I know River Road, Santa Clara are still working on their, on their project, so hopefully people can attend that.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick ones. This, I served on Elkhog, and some of you may be aware that George Clopple has announced that he's going to retire. He's going to get benefits and try to be in November so that he can transition there. The probable recommendation of the Elkhog Board will be that he became on contract and will be replaced and can be hired to work in the search process to hire a policeman. Second thing is, yesterday, the Housing Policy Board met, and as you know, they are in the process of looking at guarantees around a land bank site up off of Coker Grove. And they had two proposals, and they were holding a public hearing yesterday to get input. And then the agenda had been intended that after the public hearing, they would make a recommendation, then come to us at our September 20th meeting. Because of the number of folks who have expressed an interest in that particular development and have a wide range of different perspectives, and there needs to be a lot more robust conversation about it, we did not make a recommendation. We, in fact, recommended that we hold a public forum and then another public hearing, which means that the actual agenda item that was going to be coming to us in September will probably be deferred to another date. So you can expect that that particular project will be moving to another time. We're hoping to make sure that we have a good process to be able to hear what the neighbors in the area have to say, see if we can find a way to reconcile all the different interests so that we can have something that's positive for everyone. So just want to let you know that we're, we're moving forward with at least a more inclusive and complete process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I attended the Housing Policy Board meeting as well, as this particular development is slated for Ward Five. I don't think I've ever seen this room as packed full of people as it was yesterday. I don't think I've ever seen that many people back in here. And so there's obviously, most of the neighbors are, there's a high degree of concern, and I really want to say thank you, Chris, and John Ben Lanningham, and some of the other members of the board who suggested that we slow down, that we get more inclusive, that we talk with more of the neighbors, get more of their input, and try and lay some of those concerns. I really appreciate that very much. I gave quite a number of comments. The mayor was kind enough to hold another mayor's one-on-one in Ward Five here during the course of break, and I appreciate that for market of choice. I, too, wanted to say thank you to both Fire and Police Department for organizing the 9/11 commemorative ceremony there. That was really a wonderful event, and appreciate that Betty brought her dog, because my daughter appreciated that very much, too. Also wanted to...
Did you say anything about my branch shop?
I'm sorry. I'll try to do that next time.
Dogs and kids.
Yeah. Also wanted to mention, for those watching, that the next Cal Young Neighborhood Association General Meeting is slated for September 22nd, which is next Thursday, I believe, at 7:00 PM at Sheldon Community Center. It's a particularly important one. And for those who may be in the Cal Young Neighborhood area who see this broadcast, please attend. There'll be a vote taken at that for the separation of that neighborhood association into now three neighborhood associations. If that vote passes, we will, we will create two new ones, the Good Pasture Island Neighbors and the Northeast Neighbors will be created out of that meeting if that vote passes. So I encourage people to come. Thank you.
I see more meetings in the future.
Yeah, I had a funny feeling about that myself. No, I'm looking forward to them all.
Alan?
I'm Pat, Mayor.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I had a chance to march in the Eugene Celebration Board also, and I was blessed to be able to carry the banner, which put behind the parade, just behind Mayor Piercy. And the amazing thing is, I was really pleased, it really made my day when two people said, "Hi, Pat." But then I contrasted that with the 1,238 people who said, "Hi, Mayor Piercy." So congratulations. I got a wonderful picture of Kitty in the form of a girl. The, George Clopple retiring, after how many years?
Oh, golly. I don't have the exact number, but it's been a bunch.
But he's staying on contract.
Just on contract, so he needs a replacement, yeah.
I also was at the Housing Policy Board meeting yesterday. I wanted to really congratulate John Ben Lanningham on a few of the things that he did. Particularly, he invited the neighbors to go on a tour of existing local housing projects that the city, the city and its students and others have been part of. That's great. I took that tour perhaps 20 years ago, and it really opened my eyes as to, as to what the housing projects and the land and how they, there are a number of concerns, legitimate concerns that neighbors have that need to be addressed. On a very serious and sad note, Bethel community, every community has standout citizens, people who really are the center of the community. And if you look at old aerial maps of northwest UofA, you'll see Irwin Roads, this little loop, everything's fields except the Irwin Streets, little loop, with the Servu Market right on the end of it, it's on Barden Drive and West Irwin. The proprietor of Servu Market, longtime proprietor, second generation, and his sister, Bob Nyman, perished on the Old River last week in a ground in Arakne, Mexico. It was perhaps his 75th trip on the road, wearing a life vest, and just underlines the power of the river, somebody who really knows what they're doing. Bethel will truly miss Bob. Bob's been in Bethel since 1962. His parents opened a store right about that time. He moved from Tullamud, as would I. And Bob is, everybody knows Bob. It's just, it really is touching that everybody has come out in such support of Bob and members of Bob Nyman, and will live with him forever. And other than that, once again, extending the public, the public input period for the Housing Policy Board, I thought that was a good idea. You guys, I witnessed that yesterday. You were masterful. It was really, really brilliantly done, because that was an onslaught of visitors that were there. I could just barely get in that door, so.
George, any other things you want to add?
No, I...
Can you mention?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Welcome back, everybody. It's been a good break. We will be hosting two board and commission and committee orientations sessions for new and returning members, any neighborhood leaders, and other interested parties. The first will be held over at the library, the Bascom Tyson Room, tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And we start at 6:30, and then we'll be planning a second one on October 4th in the Saul Room. So anybody that's interested in that. Sunday, the 18th, is Sunday Streets, which is the first time we're, we're closing a street.
Street?
This street from the Fifth Street Market down to Blair. And invite everybody to come out to walk and bike and bring Lucy and everybody.
Dance.
Dance and just have an enjoyable time. That'll be fun. On the 24th, on Saturday, is a Veterans Stand Down, which is over at the Springfield Armory. And so that will be going on. And then also, our Vets Housing Project is up and going, and the ribbon cutting is planned for Veterans Day, November 11th, 2011, at 11:00 AM. So that'll be fun. And then the downtown momentum continues. Steve Masters is just starting to do some demo on the Taco Time building, inside kinds of stuff. So just, you know, it's just kind of a early starting on that. So that's continuing to keep moving along, so.
All right, so here we are.
This is Alan. I did a couple of things.
Okay.
Sorry. I did want to, as Andrew said, the neighbor summit on the 24th. I hope people can come to that at University High School. And also, the mayor and I and several prettyander and the Uofa folks will be doing the University of Oregon Welcome Back Students Walk on the 27th during the afternoon, late afternoon. And actually, they're going to close down the street there on the University on 13th and have a little festival that kind students come there with some of the local businesses. So that'll be really a good event on the 27th. And then also, there is a public hearing on the dogs, prohibition against dogs around that campus area. I talked to many of the businesses, and they're wondering why we're trying to fix something that's not broken. The history of the dog problems there were really significant, which is why the prohibition's in place. I think we're going to see a lot of people, local businesses, coming out and saying, "Why do you want to undo what works?" So, and I'm a dog lover myself, but I think there's good history and a lesson to be learned from that, and I won't be supporting that. And then finally, last week, the mayor and I attended the MTC meeting, and one of the significant presentations that we got was one that I helped arrange with Anne Beckland from High Net, and talking about her, the program that she is the manager of, which is the business assistance team, as it relates to MX. And she outlined the things that they were doing for the max lines. We've all been with a multi-pronged approach to help business, do business assistance that was very extensive and very helpful, and actually incredibly successful up there, so much so that now that they're planning new line businesses, they're actually clamoring to have a line come in front of their business. And so if you're interested, that is available online to look at at the MTC meeting of last week. So maybe we can get a link to that sent to councilors, or maybe the presentation PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Good idea. All right, so well, now I think we're ready to head into our work session topic, which is the Neighborhood Livability Working Group Progress Report. And I noticed that the report actually has on its cover a picture of the knocking on doors that we just talked about. So a nice segue into this presentation.
Councilor Zelenka and I coordinated that.
Thanks, Mayor. And Michael, I'll just turn it over to you to start us off. Sam Campcar is one of our police lieutenants involved, and I think there's...
We've got a number of us that are here to participate. Sorry. Yeah.
Want you, we've got some seats up here, too, for folks.
I just want to say, thank you, Councilor Ortiz, for plugging the summit, and we certainly want to see as many folks there as possible. Okay. Well, I want to say good morning. I guess it's good afternoon. My name's Michael Kinnison. I'm the manager of the Neighborhood Services Program, and I just want to say thank you, Mayor Piercy and councilors, for providing us time on your agenda to talk to you about the work of the Neighborhood Livability Working Group. And with me today are a number of folks that are members of that group, and they represent the different stakeholders that have been involved. And given that this is a challenging issue, a community issue, that requires a concerted effort from a variety of different groups, we felt it important that they were all here today to be available to answer any questions you have and hear their perspective on the work that we've been doing as well. So what I thought we'd do is just start and ask them to introduce themselves to you and just identify with what interests they're representing in our process. And then I'm going to go through a presentation, give you some context for our process, what we've been doing, some focused discussion on a number of the strategies in which the city has a lead role, and then we're going to open up as much of the rest of the time just to hear from you. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Paul Shong. I'm Assistant Vice President, Dean of Students, and I'm one of the many university people that have been associated with this effort. And I'd like to introduce Jennifer Summers out in our audience, a new member of the Dean of Student Staff who specializes in alcohol education, and she's gotten a lot of press lately for spearheading initiating our alcohol EDU program for new students this coming fall. And that was a program that she and the Associate Dean of Students, Cheryl Eister, have implemented at the university.
My name's Caitlin Lang. I am a student at the Uofa.
I'm Sam Campcar. I'm the Night Shift Watch Commander.
Carolyn Jacobs. I'm Chairperson of the South University Neighbors.
Jim Anderson. My family has properties on campus.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here.
Okay, so everybody, hopefully, has read their progress report, cover to cover, so I won't have to say much of anything, and we'll just open it right up. But the cover of which is there on the first slide. Thanks, Beth, if you could just dim that a little bit. And I thought that was perfect, mention of the Uofa community. just dim that a little bit. Um, and I thought that was perfect, uh, mention of the UO community welcome. And that's a photo from last year's, um, event. This, um, why are we here today? Well, um, we're here, uh, today to give you a progress update. Um, and not, not really to give you a, um, presentation on final recommendations. These are really preliminary list of options for addressing a very challenging problem. Um, you can think of them as, um, a list of best practices, um, that we, um, have drawn from, um, both just, uh, past recommendations on work around this issue, but also what other communities are doing across the country. Um, when we approached this effort, we, um, decided we would consider all options and we wouldn't limit ourselves necessarily by costs of things. Um, and, uh, but a number of these, the viability of some haven't been necessarily fully determined. Um, uh, some, for example, like, um, the strategy calling for enhanced police resources have been made in isolation of other community priorities and we recognize that. Um, but, uh, we're here today, um, to look to you to help provide some direction for the rest of our work. Um, the group, um, does not feel like it's finished. We know we will continue to work on, on some of these strategies, refining and revising them. And your feedback today is gonna really help inform the direction of the group. While there's much agreement on the appropriateness and potential effectiveness of the strategies that are included in the report, um, some differences remain in the group. And, uh, these are not a prioritized list with full consent of the group either. Today, we're gonna be focusing on those strategies, uh, that require city support and action. So when you read the full report, there's, um, a number of strategies in there that are, uh, would be led by other stakeholders. Um, for example, the University of Oregon has a number of significant, um, strategies on the table there. But, uh, so today we wanted to kind of support, we wanted to focus on what is city involvement? Because we're wanting to hear from you and, um, clarify what might be city council's role in some of those in the future. However, we're, we're here to welcome discussion on any of the strategies that you're interested in. So if you want to talk about something else you've seen in there, please don't hesitate to, to bring that up. Um, and then for individual strategies that we talk about, we really ask you to identify any questions or concerns that you have, um, additional information needs that you'd like to see, um, give us a sense for where, um, your support is, or, um, if you have other ideas that you're not seeing there. Um, and help us provide some direction on, uh, how best to move forward, uh, with strategies that may require future council action. Let's see. You'll notice that a number of strategies are supportive of and help implement adopted policies and recommendations from other plans and initiatives that are noted in each strategy description. And from a triple bottom line perspective, there are significant economic and equity considerations related to this issue, um, including costs for public services, loss, uh, or devaluation of property, and the challenge of maintaining a safe and peaceful community for all residents. And then finally, there's a couple other points I'd like for us all to keep in mind. All those involved and affected by this issue, the University of Oregon, uh, students and other young adults in this area, um, the neighborhoods, our property managers and landlords are all assets in our community. And it's easy to forget, uh, that when we're talking about, um, a very challenging, um, problem. Um, and, uh, it may be easy to find fault with one group or another, but in reality, this is a community issue. We all have a stake and responsibility to act. Uh, the university students are certainly a, a big asset, economic engine in our community. They add vibrancy, um, and diversity to our neighborhoods. Um, and, uh, are, um, certainly our property managers and landlords, um, by and large, are very committed to being good neighbors and managing their properties in a responsible way. And that's been very clear from those participating in our process. Um, so we just wanna, um, just wanna keep that in mind. And also that this isn't, um, simply a student problem. Um, we know that most students live side by side, uh, with their neighbors, um, or with other long-term residents as good neighbors. Um, but we also know that, uh, some of the problems are caused by students, not necessarily University of Oregon students, but they're also caused by non-students alike. And so it's important to focus on the behaviors and not stereotype any particular group. And we've made great effort in our group and we're talking about this. And our, um, student friends and our university friends remind us that, um, it's, uh, it's a broader issue in this area. Okay. So let's talk a little bit about, um, process, how we got started. Um, this all started back in March of, uh, 2010. Um, there was, uh, something pulled together called the Livability Summit. It was largely initiated by long-term residents in the South University neighborhood that were becoming increasingly frustrated with noise, um, and other impacts from, um, undesirable behaviors often associated with alcohol consumption. Um, and, um, that group, the stakeholders that were there, agreed to continue meeting, um, as what became called the Neighborhood Livability Working Group. And facilitation, uh, was to be provided by the City Manager's Office, um, through, um, my program, Neighborhood Services. So who is the Neighborhood Livability Working Group? That. Okay, Beth, you said it. Just click the left button.
Try clicking the right.
It's temperamental.
It's not looking.
Go outside the menu and do it.
So do you mind just, uh, advancing them for me?
No. There you, yeah, there you go. That's right.
Did it? Oh, there we go. Wait a minute. Sam's fixing me up here.
Yeah, we'll go if you get out of the menu.
Okay.
Still not teaming up.
All right. Thank you. So that's, uh, that's a page, one of the fir-, page two in your report lists who has been involved in this process. And as you see, it's, um, a cross-section of folks from all of the obvious stakeholder groups that you'd think about. Um, and, uh, at the bottom of the page there, um, is, uh, a purpose that was identified, developed by the group and agreed to as part of developing our working agreements early on. And that was to identify and clarify issues existing in planned efforts, gaps and shortfalls, and propose actions for improving impacts to neighborhoods from loud parties and other behavioral issues. So what have we accomplished? And I think we've been meeting for about 14 months. Well, one of the first things we did was we spent some time, um, cataloging and clarifying what those negative behaviors and impacts are. So in Appendix A of your report is a document called the Catalog of Negative Behaviors and Impacts. And it, um, it details out the property, personal and behavioral crimes and issues that, um, we're dealing with in this area, as well as zoning and land use issues. And it also includes some personal testimonials through emails that have been collected, um, in that area through a network of neighbors that share their experiences. Um, and those give you a real flavor for what the experience is of, um, the long-term residents in those neighborhoods. We also spent some time compiling data on crime and other neighborhood characteristics to clarify what kind of current conditions and trends are. And that's located in Section Three of your report, as well as Appendix Bs and C. There's a number of graphics and tables there. Uh, Beth, could you hit the next slide? So this, uh, image on the top is, uh, was prepared by the UO Infographics Lab and it shows two years' worth of data on, um, all crimes. It's kind of a crime hotspot, uh, map. Um, and, uh, we're, it's kind of a little bit hard to see in here, but the dark colors is really a bright red. So wherever you see those concentration of color is where, uh, more crimes have been occurring. And so not surprisingly, to the, um, the west there, within the West University neighborhood, uh, there's lots of activity. Along the northern boundary, um, of the South University neighborhood, there's quite a bit happening. And then as you travel on to the east, around the eastern side of campus, there's still some, there's some spots there, um, along the Fairmount neighbors that, um, that come out, to pop out. If you look at that chart there, that looks at total crime for 2010. Um, West University has been responsible for over 15% of total crimes, um, in Eugene. Um, and, uh, about 21% of the behavioral crimes, some of those, those dealing with, um, disorderly conduct, noise, those kinds of behaviors that really have been, um, affecting the quality of life in the area. Um, when, we also looked at, um, a five-year trend from 2006 to 2010 for noise, disorderly conduct, alcohol-related violations. Those are actual arrests. And what the trend showed is that they're holding fairly steady in Amazon and Fairmount neighborhoods. Um, but in the South University neighborhood, uh, there's been, uh, things trending upward. And, um, the, um, in 2010, uh, there was, uh, recorded nearly two and a half times the number of those types of violations as five years earlier. And not surprisingly, West University has been, has been trending upward, um, as well. But it's also important to note before we just leave the issue of crime, uh, that, um, while young adults in this area are involved in a lot of those activities, we'd like to see change. Um, there are also disproportionate, um, number of victims of crime in the area. So, um, this area, um, has such a large concentration of young folks that are, uh, easy targets. And they've become, um, easy targets for a pretty hard criminal element in our community, and some of which are very serious and even violent crimes. And that's of concern, uh, to us. Uh, next slide, Beth. This next slide, um, shows, uh, um, some of the density around campus. So, um, the darker colors indicate, um, higher density, uh, types of, of, uh, units. So the real dark colors are your apartment buildings. The lighter colors, the lighter gray is more single-family, um, residential. And so not surprisingly, West University to the west of campus there is, is nearly all, um, kind of high-density living. I think, um, if you look in terms of all units, it's around 1% now owner occupancy there. Um, some of the other neighborhoods, um, don't have that, quite that high, um, of, uh, rental housing, but, um, it's significant. In the South University neighborhood, if you consider all units, that includes single-family as well as multifamily, they're, um, at around, uh, 20% owner occupancy. Um, and, um, Amazon, 47%, and Fairmount, 55%. Now, that's a little bit misleading. That's, that doesn't, that considers all kinds of housing units. So we took a quick look using the Regional Land Information Database for Fairmount and Sona to give a sense for what does that mean for the core parts of these neighborhoods, the single-family residential areas. And, um, this isn't really, this was a rough analysis, um, but it's probably fairly accurate. And in Fairmount, um, single-family owner occupancy is around 71%. And in Sona, it's around 59%. So that's, um, roughly, um, seven in 10 single-family homes are still in owner occupancy in Fairmount and roughly, uh, a little less than six in 10 in, in South University neighborhood. Another, um, uh, thing that we did as a group is we spent some time looking at, um, what, what the work that was done before us. So in 2003, some of you may remember the West University Task Force that was formed in response to the riots. Um, it focused just in the West University neighborhood. And I made a number of recommendations, some of which, not surprisingly, were actually carrying over into our work, um, as well. But we thought it'd be good to get familiar with what was recommended before and what progress had been made. So in your report, Section Four, um, contains an update. Um, what, it clarifies what the recommendations were and kind of what has been done on them to date. We also spent time documenting current efforts to protect neighborhood livability. Uh, Beth, could you, uh, advance it? Thank you. So that's a list, uh, and that's in Section Five. And, um, it's, it's several pages in your, um, report, um, explaining what these different initiatives are. It's a pretty impressive mix of what is already happening. There's quite a bit of effort, uh, at the university, at the, at the city level, in the neighborhoods, um, going on right now to try to, uh, address this impact. But, um, certainly plenty more work, um, to be We also, um, looked outside Eugene, um, and conducted some research on best practices in other communities to learn what has been effective elsewhere, um, and learned a number of things. So one of which is that we're not unique. Um, every town, gown, community across this country is dealing with this issue, um, some to better effect than others. It also takes a village. Um, to be successful, you have to have a strong commitment from all the stakeholders that are involved, um, and a willingness, uh, to invest the time and the resources necessary to really deal with the problem. There's no silver bullet. There's no one strategy or initiative that's going to fix it. It takes a variety of, um, approaches. While education is important, particularly, uh, that which focuses on kind of modifying behavior, behavioral modification, can be affected, it's not enough, um, by itself. And there needs to be significant consequences for unacceptable behavior. And finally, um, law enforcement has an important role. So those communities that are dealing with this issue, um, there's, there's always some role for, uh, law enforcement in it. And then finally, the bulk of our work has been, um, taking all of this information and trying to come up with our own mix of potential strategies to, to address the problem. So in Section Six, um, Beth, you go ahead and advance it, please. Section Six, um, page 18 of your report, you'll see that deals with what are the ideas, uh, that we've come up with to try to get a handle on the problem. And you'll find, um, that we've tried to, well, we tried to listen to, um, Mayor Piercy and Councilor Zelenka that came to one of our earlier meetings and encouraged us to take a broad look and think about different approaches. So you'll see a mix of, uh, those that, um, focus on education, um, providing incentives, regulations, enforcement, and local initiative to deal with the problem. You'll find that not all of them are the city's burden. So the city is a big player here, has a big role, certainly. Um, but, uh, we have a mix of strategies in there that have, um, different leads. And certainly the University of Oregon, um, is a significant one. And then, uh, finally, we, as I mentioned earlier, this is not a prioritized list. We didn't go through a process where all the members agreed on everything and we all agreed what was the most important items. But we did go through an exercise to, to get assessed for what members thought, um, that they anticipated would be, um, those strategies that would, that would be most effective for the negative behaviors and impacts that we were talking about. So in Appendix D, there's a summary of the results of that exercise. And, um, in a real general sense, those strategies that, um, folks thought would have, uh, that most, um, most likely to be highly effective on livability issues were, um, some type of enhanced police resource in the area, a social host ordinance, um, a UO police department with some, um, extra jurisdictional authority in the campus area, off-campus area, and increasing, uh, fines for alcohol and noise-related violations. Okay. So now, Beth, one more slide. I think it's the last one. And then I'm gonna ask you to, you're hitting a button. Some other items are gonna come up here. What I want to do now is touch on specifically those strategies in which the city has a, has a lead, um, role. First item is developing, uh, is it working now? Okay, great. First one is developing a Eugene social host ordinance. And I've listed page numbers here, so if you want to follow in your report, you could do that. So social host laws holds, hold hosts. And hosts are defined as tenants, landowners, and landlords liable for costs associated with responding to disruptive parties that typically include underage drinking. Social host ordinances are becoming increasingly popular in, uh, communities across the US. And they're actually, uh, proving to be, uh, fairly effective at, um, helping address this issue. Um, Lane County has a social host ordinance. Um, it's not, um, enforceable within the city of Eugene, uh, city limits. Um, and what we, what this strategy calls for is actually this would replace what we have on the books that's now called a first response ordinance. So if you're familiar with the first response ordinance, it involves gatherings of two or more, or 25 or more people, involves two, um, a minimum of two violations for noise or alcohol-related, um, crimes. Um, and, uh, it establishes, um, a mechanism, uh, a timeframe for repeat violators that could be held liable for recovery costs of up to $1,500. Um, but what we've found, it doesn't include property under liability. What we've found is it actually has not been an effective tool. Um, the criteria are very difficult to enforce. Um, residents are getting fairly savvy, um, in, um, sharing the burden, so to speak, whenever they're, whenever they have the police show up. So that you might catch one or two residents one time and you might catch one or two another time. But, um, very difficult to trip the mechanism so that you could actually, um, initiate a recovery of, of, um, response costs for subsequent visits. So, um, a social host ordinance, we think, would be more effective with some of the common elements there. As I mentioned, it would extend liability beyond a legal resident. So you wouldn't have to be present necessarily to be considered a host. You could be held liable for behavior at your property. Um, it's not- Address dependent. So if the violation essentially goes with the host. So if you were found guilty or offender of the social host ordinance, um, and you moved and you were at a place that, um, had another loud party and was also found in violation of social, social host ordinance, um, you'd be held guilty again and- of social host ordinance, you'd be held guilty again and could be guilty for subsequent increased fines and penalties. There's a fine on the first offense, and graduated fines, and as I mentioned, includes recovery costs for subsequent offenses within a defined period. There is mechanisms for property owner notification, so it takes a kind of a no-surprises approach. Certainly, it wouldn't be fair to penalize a property owner if they didn't have any notice that there were recurring problems or chronic problems at an address. And unpaid fines can result in property liens on property. This is one that would require, obviously, council action. It would be adopting an ordinance. So it's something that we will be coming back to you on. Second one is increasing fines for alcohol and noise-related offenses. That's fairly self-explanatory. Currently, our fine levels are not really considered an effective deterrent. Our base fines are lower than other agencies are, and this strategy just calls for reviewing and recommending changes to those base fines for alcohol and noise-related offenses. I don't believe this requires a council action. It's something that Muni Court and our Judge Allen would initiate. And we've had some conversations with them, so they're aware that this is something that is on the table that we are considering. Let's see if this works. Yay. Number three, enhanced police resource. So this was a recommendation of the West University Task Force that specifically called for a dedicated team of officers that would patrol the campus area on weekends during the school year. We've not really, we've not been able to do that due to the reality of just our challenging economic conditions, the resource constraints that we have here, other competing public safety priorities, obviously. And we've just been filling the gap by paying officers overtime, really, to meet the need on peak weekends there throughout the year. We certainly recognize the working group doesn't have authority to determine public safety priorities for our community. But again, as I mentioned, we just wanted to include this in the mix as really it is a best practice in other communities, that you have to have some type of sustained, effective police presence to help address the issue. But we also thought that we needed to be realistic. What are the costs for doing something like this? So in the report, we ballpark what it would take to do that, if this was something the city of Eugene would shoulder. And it's significant. It is definitely significant. But as we're going to discuss here in the next strategy, there may be other opportunities to share this law enforcement burden. And so specifically, one strategy that's on the table is a UO police department and establishing a university public safety district. So you're all probably well aware that the university is on its way to establishing a campus police department with fully sworn officers. And some communities have taken that a step further and created districts outside of their campus boundaries that allow their campus police force to actively patrol and enforce laws in surrounding campus neighborhoods. So this strategy recommends creating a university public safety district, and it would provide another option for enhancing police resources in the area and shifting some of that responsibility away from the Eugene Police Department. It would require some type of intergovernmental agreement naturally, and that would inquire some kind of council involvement in the future. It's not a quick fix, so I think the current Department of Public Safety at the university estimates it's going to take them at least five years to get a fully sworn police force up and running. And of course, this isn't our decision alone. It's contingent on University of Administration, and those conversations would have to happen. Number five is regulate party bus impacts. If you're not clear on what a party bus is, these are very large vehicles that transport groups of people between events. There's generally alcohol involved, so you can consume alcohol on the buses. So they do provide one service. They avoid people drinking and driving. But they also include pretty impressive entertainment systems on them, lighting, sound. Some of them even have, that we've read about, have poles in them for pole dancing, so you can let your imagination go wild there. The problem is that we have an operator here that is now taking the party bus into residential neighborhoods. So imagine you're at home, bus pulls down the street, 11, 12, however late it is at night, stops, doors open up, music blaring, 25, 30-plus young folks get out in varying states of inebriation and go to a party. And you can imagine how folks are real happy with that. So this strategy calls for kind of a two-pronged approach there, contacting the operators and trying to get an enhanced understanding of how they operate, and encouraging an understanding of what the concerns are in the neighborhood, and seeing if we can't minimize those impacts, but also exploring regulatory approaches to control their use. The latter is a challenge. Our initial research indicates that these don't fall under public passenger vehicle licensing in our code, like a shuttle or taxi would, nor do they have requirements under the city's uniform business practices. So there's no standards, really, to set for their operations. They're considered charter vehicles, so regulatory options are limited. It's really not clear what we could do there, and at this point, it's really not clear what role council might have in this issue. Next, crime prevention through environmental design, or SEPTED, as that's often referred to. And one, the obvious element of SEPTED is that it looks at the built environment and how that might contribute to illicit behavior, criminal activity. The obvious thing might be lighting. So we'd be doing an analysis in the area to see what physical improvements might change and help address the problem. Another issue is looking at areas that people can hide away from out of sight and be doing things that they shouldn't be doing. But it also looks more broadly and considers how to enhance crime prevention education efforts, encourage just good neighbor awareness and good neighbor behavior, so it melds well with some of the other strategies that we're proposing. It considers ways to boost the social connectedness between neighbors, the idea being when you know your neighbors, you're more apt to act a little more respectfully and help look out for each other. And it would also encourage landlords to implement additional security measures based on what that analysis finds. And it would look at the code to see if there's ways that the code might actually be inhibiting measures to implement more, better environmental design for public safety. We anticipate a lot of those, a lot of those recommendations might involve private property, because there's only so much public property in the neighborhoods, and so it would naturally rely on voluntary compliance by landowners. Another measure that we looked at is trying to deal with the issue of missing street and safety signs. So if you ever drive around the neighborhood, if anybody has, trying to figure out where you are unless you've memorized the streets can be a real challenge. And that's really common in any campus area. So for whatever reason, young folks really favor street signs as a part of their decor.
You used to have a high-speed community, I've heard.
Exactly. So not only are they stolen, they're often vandalized, broken, defaced with graffiti and whatnot. It becomes a real challenge. In our community, we have, this is interesting, over 30,000 signs in our inventory, over 10,000, or nearly 10,000, street signs. So keeping up with all those is a real challenge for Public Works. But it is important to note that staff do make replacement of traffic safety signs a priority. So when they hear about a traffic safety sign, like a stop sign missing, they act on that. If it's after hours, if it's on the weekend, staff get called in, and their goal is replacing that within 24 hours. Street signs are a lower priority, and so we have a backlog of those, and it's simply difficult to keep up. A number of ideas, though, for helping deal with the problem would be considering expanding the use of fasteners, products, installation methods that are vandal-resistant. So we have done some of that. Public Works is considering a number of other innovations there. One option might be increasing penalties and fines for vandalism and theft, although the relatively low cost of replacing signs might make that kind of a hard thing to justify. Media campaigns, other communities use media campaigns to publicize what the costs are and the dangers of sign vandalism to some effect. And we might also consider other options instead of replacing signs, like street name stenciling on posts or curbs, working with volunteer neighborhood groups to help us do that. So those are just some of the other ideas of dealing with that issue. Another strategy is homeownership and investment program. So in campus areas, there's a real strong incentive to convert single-family-owned homes to rental properties. And the livability and stability of a neighborhood can deteriorate as a proportion of rental property grows, and followed by disinvestment or disinterest by committed property owners in a community. So to combat this problem, a number of communities have started programs to encourage homeownership and upkeep of properties. And a common goal is really elevating the appeal of the university to faculty, staff, and students by offering them affordable, safe, convenient neighborhoods in which to live around the campuses. Key elements of these strategies are forgivable and low-to-no-interest loans for down payments and closing costs, home improvements, preferred lenders with discounted fees and preferable mortgage rates, financial incentives to provide first right of refusal option to the program partnership to purchase a home for resale to another owner occupant. So if you received a loan to buy your home and you're going to sell, you would give first right of refusal to the partners running this program so that they could have an opportunity to purchase that home and resell it to another owner occupant. Programs for actively acquiring, rehabbing, and selling homes to first-time home buyers within target areas. So this one is, as you can imagine, is, requires a strong commitment and a partnership between a university, the city, and local financial institutions, and quite a significant resource to invest and get going. But it is something that a number of universities across the country, or communities, I should say, and where universities are located, are actually using. Evaluate the need for MPT in the campus area. So a contributing factor to negative behaviors and impacts in this area is just the sheer number of younger folks living there, the concentration of younger folks there. That in and of itself serves to attract other young folks into the area. So this area now has become a destination spot to have a good time, to party. So young folks, not only to just live there, young folks throughout our community know that, but also in surrounding communities. So we're getting folks from the region that come on the weekend here to have a good time. So for years, development in this area has responded to demand and favored multifamily development that's been catering to this certain demographic. In '03, the West University Task Force recommended expanding MPT into the West University area, and that did occur. But the objectives were to improve the quality of housing stock there, as well as attracting both long-term residents and a healthy mix of neighbors. So this strategy just simply supports the current review that's going on for MPT that's underway, that's considering what the continued need for MPT is in this area, and asks that also consideration be given to whether it's really met the goals, and what if any contribution has MPT, has the program, had to livability in the area. So there's not really asking council to do anything, other than the working group really supports that council's looking at that issue. And then finally, we have a number of strategies that we've grouped under what we're called neighborhood-based planning. So in addition to individual behaviors, the working group acknowledged that the patterns of development in the campus area are a factor in livability there. We've just mentioned the role density can have, but other factors influencing the design and development can play a role as well. One example is that we have, in the code right now, we provide incentives for developers, or allowances, I should say, for less open space if they meet certain density targets. A result of that is that we have large complexes that have no social gathering places onsite. So when you get visitors over, what you have pretty quickly is folks can be spilling out on the sidewalks, in the streets, and those impacts start to get spread around the neighborhood. That's just one issue that neighbors have identified that they'd like to see looked at under this strategy, as well as thinking about things like how we calculate multifamily density. So looking at that a different way so that we're actually really reflecting what the number of residents are in a multifamily, a planned multifamily development, even considering different definitions for traditional multifamily and other kinds of high occupancy housing that caters primarily to the young adult demographic, because they can have significantly different kinds of impacts. And of course, looking at completing area planning for the university area neighborhoods, so really looking at that interface between the university and the high-density housing and surrounding neighborhoods, and doing some actual planning. So a number of these are consistent with things that are already underway. Envision Eugene has one of its, in its strategies and tactics, to do that type of neighborhood-based planning. You have given some direction to staff to move forward with some of the code amendments related to the ICS process, which addressed some of these issues. And so some of the remaining proposed actions under this strategy could be addressed as part of the area planning process. So council's going to be involved in any code amendments that come of that work or any future plan adoptions. That is the list that the city is directly related in. And the rest of our time, we would like to open up to any questions you have, specifically about those. We want to hear what your thoughts are, and any other questions that you might have. And I would encourage you to direct questions to anybody in our group, and also our group to feel free to weigh in.
Absolutely. And I want to thank you all very much for that great presentation. A lot of work has gone into this, and a lot of it is things we're already thinking a lot about, so I appreciate that. I'll just start out by saying one thing that I think is, and maybe it's infused in what you've been thinking about, but if you're going to have a neighborhood that's 99% student occupied, how do you actually have a neighborhood? I'm sort of interested in what makes a neighborhood association with responsibilities and ownership and all of that, under that sort of peculiar circumstance of being just almost totally student-lived-in. So I think that's a different neighborhood association kind of thing than we're accustomed to thinking about, and it's kind of, it might require working with a bunch of young people who live there to figure out what would be a meaningful kind of neighborhood association to them that would be in keeping with the goals we have as a community, too. So that's just something for you to think about. I actually had somebody return to me a high-street sign that evidently, I don't know when it came from, maybe the '40s or something. So I brought it back here. I thought that would make a good relic somewhere to put around.
Did you let Tom Larson know that?
I don't know where it ended up, John. Do you know where that?
You were going to do it.
And I love, actually love the, I know how hard it is just by the way you described it, but that notion of trying to build stability in the neighborhoods that aren't eroded yet. And I said that negatively, and I don't mean it, I just mean aren't all predominantly student, but remain a good, strong mix of students and people who are here more permanently. And I know it's hard, because you've got to get the financial institutions, and everybody's got to invest in that. But if we really, university and city, if we really see that to our advantage, then it's worth sort of arduously working yourself through the process to begin that journey a little at a time, I think, to see if we can stabilize some of our older housing and not have them become multi-unit housing. So I think that's a very, I think, I recognize it's hard work, but I think it's a really important part of, because I really strongly understand why people want to live near the university, why students are located there, all of those things. But I also really treasure our inner-city neighborhoods and think they're really part of what makes us a great community. So that kind of work seems to be, to be worth it for the university and worth it for us. Finally, the social gathering spot, I hear that a lot, and the lack thereof, so I think that's an important issue as well. Open it up. Betty?
Thank you. I have some questions.
Yep.
Some questions and some comments. First, starting with my last thought, the ICS in compatibility standards, I think that is urgent. And we've been talking about it for years, but we haven't really taken any action yet. I think that's, and I think it's really important to save South University neighborhood. West University would be nice if we could save those beautiful old houses, but that seems to be pretty much destroyed already. And I think it's to all... And I think it's to all, the advantage of all the community to save that neighborhood, and that we should take actions that prevent things happening that destroy it, which in a way, MPT has contributed to. In case anyone's listening, watching, that doesn't know what MPT is, it's multiple-unit family housing, right? I like to encourage us to say what things stand for when we talk about them. But I think when people get tax breaks for building, it gives them an incentive to tear down houses and build multiple-family housing. As for homeownership, that's great, but I know that some people, and some people have been very disturbed by this, some parents who live other places buy homes for their students while they're here, and the students don't care that much about, it's just a temporary home, and that becomes a big party place. And I've heard of several cases of that, and that's, if we're helping people to get homeownership, it should be, I mean, you should consider that aspect of it, I think. As for the street signs, I wondered, wouldn't it be financially prudent to buy the ones that are vandal-resistant? I probably, I assume they'd cost more, but it would be better than replacing them all the time.
Betty, just a slight answer is that part of the problem is, city puts them in gravel. They're yanked out, they don't cement them in place. And then, of course, there's how is the top attached? But often, the whole post is gone, because they can't seem to decide to put them into cement. Because also, if the post was in cement, they could stencil the name on, so even if the top was gone, you could still do it.
Yeah, good idea. You know, I had the experience recently of looking for a house in that area, and all the signs were gone.
I think 72, I mean, our neighborhood's very tiny, 72 street name signs are gone.
Makes it really difficult if you're trying to find, if you don't already live there. Party bus was interesting to me. I think maybe, I never heard of that before, but I think maybe one came to my neighborhood once. I remember hearing a lot of noise, and there was a bus out there, and there were a lot of people, and so I think maybe I experienced it without knowing what it was.
Party bus project.
Yeah. I really am concerned about your suggestion for increasing fines on students. I think, I know when we discussed this some years ago, I remember someone saying, "Well, when I was a student, I would just have paid $500, so what?" And I thought, yeah, if you come from a family with a lot of money, it's nothing. But if you are barely making it through school, working your way through school, $500 could mean you had to drop out for a semester. So I think we should be very cautious about increasing fines on students. And I guess that's enough. It was very interesting, and I hope that, thanks for the presentation.
Alan, you're next.
Thank you, Matt. This is really important work that the group has done, and I want to thank everybody that's there for all the hard work you've been doing over the months of going through all this stuff. I wanted to reiterate one point that was made, it's not a U of O student, it's more or less youth, partying youth is an issue. The U of O and the students actually, and the youth have been bringing a lot of vitality and contribute a lot to our community, and a lot of people live here, including myself, because it is a campus town. But there are, I mean, there are huge problems that result out of that, so it's not all perfect and rosy. There are incredible problems that are created for livability for the people that have invested a lot of their life savings in these homes and want nice neighborhoods, in terms of the bad behavior that we're seeing. What we're talking about is bad behavior of youth. I really like the idea of the host block, and I would like to see us pursue that, because most houses are, and student housing and homes that are rented out to folks are just fine, they don't create problems. There are a certain number of places that are repeat offenders, and we have no good tools to deal with them. And I think this host block is a potential way of dealing with that. I also like the idea, and I've worked on for a long time, the U of O Police Department in getting them more authority, and I like the idea of a U of district where we would enhance their ability to respond to especially noise, partying, minor possession, and other types of crimes in area around the university. I talked to Chief Kerr, and he's supportive of the idea. Of course, it's a long-term fix, and the short-term fix, and that's something I think we should definitely pursue. With regard to MPT, I've made clear that I don't think it's needed in that area anymore. There's more than enough incentive and more than enough housing, you can go without it. I really like the idea of how we count residences and changing the way we do that. The way that we do that is old and doesn't work, and so we're getting, instead of counting sediments, we're counting people who live there. And I like the idea that it puts forth there. Social gathering places, I think there's, that is the real need in the West University neighborhood in particular, there's no place for people to go, so they flop out into the streets. And one of the unintended consequences of the U of O becoming a dry campus was that those controlled parties where drinking was allowed on campus now are off-campus. And I would hope to see the university reconsider that, maybe have a few small, few events on certain dates, like Halloween is a good example, and other dates where they can have a party to go to on-campus instead of walking out into the neighborhood.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Okay.
One more thing, new program.
Okay, Pat, you're next.
Thank you. Put me back in the queue, too. Actually, I defer to Alan a lot in that Alan does live right in the middle of it, and every day, he and his wife, since we experience some of the things that we only experience when we go to a game, perhaps. I lived there in '72, '73, '74, and it seemed like a pretty safe and quiet neighborhood back then. Of course, maybe it's because I was one of the members. Perspective. So just a couple of things very quickly. I have a question regarding holding owners liable, you brushed on that just a little bit, for actions in their property, and maybe this may be something that I could direct at Jim a little bit. We have fairly strict rental codes in Eugene, and I'm wondering if holding owners liable for actions in their property, if there's any conflict there between the rental code and actions that owners can take regarding renters who are abusing property. Does that conflict with the rental code in any way? Or if it does, as we move forward, with the more strict fines for owners, is there something balance going to take place there? And maybe, have you thought about that? Remember, you have some property in West University.
Well, referencing the rental code, the state legislature, a couple of years ago, modified the rental codes that, and took away the ability of the property manager or landlord to take any kind of monetary action against a tenant that's exhibiting bad behavior, or violating any other part of their agreement, their lease agreement. One of the few real items where the property manager or landlord has any teeth is, comes down to actual eviction, which is a, especially in the student housing market, is difficult because your leases are for a year, and evacuating a unit mid-school year could leave that unit open all school year. So as a property owner, being held responsible for the behavior of a tenant is difficult. And we, and all of the, part of our stakeholder group is actively now trying to be a good neighbor in these areas, and makes, puts forth a lot of effort in trying to address poor behavior, or, and they, we want to provide safe, clean living for our tenants, and we want our tenants to behave in a manner that is positive for the whole neighborhood.
It seems that.
I think Caitlin wanted to respond.
No, 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 not to that.
Not this, later. Go ahead.
So is that?
That does cover it. I'm glad you're at the table, because he gave you a perspective.
You know, just ignoring, for a property manager or property owner just to ignore a party house, yeah, he ought to have some consequences. Most of us try to control those situations. One of the other difficult things is, it's been mentioned, is the roving bands of people and out in the streets. And I think all of us remember back to our days, in college, we were all there. One of the things that we didn't have is we didn't have cell phones and texting. And a very innocent social gathering can turn into an ugly situation very quickly because of texting and that, so it's a difficult subject, so.
You know, the, a couple of other things real quickly, pardon me, Mike, we're running out of town.
Sure.
Others are in the queue. Regarding MPT or MFT, or whatever it may be, we.
We call it Muppet and a typo in the report. I don't know if anybody caught that.
MPT is something that we do need to talk about more, and right now, this is not the forum for it. I lived on Chans Road in Tillamook. You think Chans Road was a popular road sign to rip off, my word? Yeah. So good luck, good luck with High Street and University Street and all the others. And just very, very briefly, I met my wife on the university. There's a little lamp right in front of Chapman Hall, 38 years ago, we met there. So I, my experience is not quite the same as council or Zelenka's in that I have very distant, vague memories of what it was like with them on campus. Thank you very much.
So I just want to point out, we've actually got about seven minutes left in our allocated time, and I, so I'm just, I've got Andrea and George and Mike in the queue, but I'm just going to pull you that we're kind of limited in time. So Andrea.
Well, I would move to extend, Mayor, if we get to that point, because I think this is a really important conversation. And thank you for the presentation. Thank you all for taking time out of your day to be here. I'm just curious, the hospital's a pretty big footprint there in the campus area. Was there any involvement? Was there a request? Was there any contact?
We didn't, we did not involve the hospital in the group.
Well, you know, that's, that's too bad, because they're a big employer in the community, and they are a part of that community, and there are things, they're not going away.
Sure.
And they actually do support the police department pretty significantly.
We could certainly make that effort now. We're not, we're not by any means done with our work.
I understand that, but I was kind of surprised not to see that, seeing as that they're, that they're in the community there. So a couple of comments, I'm supportive of the social host ordinance. I think that that would be a good idea. I will take the fifth on the party bus.
Please don't.
You're taking a where on the fifth?
The interesting thing about, sorry, that was my evil twin. A couple of things about this conversation, which is pretty interesting, we talked about the MPTs, and we talked about, earlier in the conversation, we're talking about not low-income housing, but affordable housing for communities. And, you know, there is a dispersal policy for those units. The city fathers in the 60s or 70s decided that all communities were going to take their share of, you know, affordable housing, and we've been land banking ever since, and I'm really in support of that. This isn't for this conversation, but since you were here and I was thinking about this, is there any way we could look at a dispersal policy for social service agencies? I think that there is an overabundance in some of the neighborhoods that carry the weight of the community. And I think that it would be really a conversation that maybe we could have at council at some point in time, because I really feel like some of the community members, some neighborhoods take more than their share, and they're okay with it, but when, you know, we can't get it once the agency buys the property, that's their choice at that point, what they do with it. I don't want to change the rules as we go down the road, but I really think that there's other neighborhoods that need their share of not only affordable housing units, but also social service agencies. So that's for the future, that's not for here. There was one other thing that I, I guess I'll email you if I have any other things. Oh, campus police. I'm also in support of like a zone or an area where they have a little bit more incentive to, or have more ability. I'm challenged that, you know, we've done all this work on downtown, and it's like we're smushing all the issues out in the perimeter of the neighborhoods, and so there has to be a different way of doing this issue. And if the University of Oregon is willing to step up, I think they should. Thank you.
George?
Oh, just real quickly, I want to thank you for all for this. I read this over the last couple nights, and it's very thorough, and I'm really impressed with, you covered a lot of ground here quite well, I think. I do like the idea of the social host ordinance. I've come around to the idea of holding safety zone for the campus police after having some doubts about that idea, but as long as they're sworn and have the same training as Eugene Police, I think that that would probably be a good idea, because then our officers could, you know, go to other parts of town where there's problems and wouldn't have to be up there for party patrol and game day potential problems and stuff. And so that, I think, would be a good thing, because they're, they're under pressure, they can't be everywhere at once, so that would probably be a good idea. And I think we really need to explore regulating the party buses, I'm down with that. And also, I mean, as far as the signs go, it seems to me like either a metal or a treated four-by-four sign sunk in concrete at every corner with the name of the street, but in vertically, and you see that in other cities, you're going to have to like bash that thing with a four-by-four or a truck to remove it. No doubt that will happen occasionally, but.
Make it harder.
I mean, it'd be more expensive, of course, to put those in, but it might solve the problem long-term. Just finally, I mean, I, you know, I read here about the MPT section, I was kind of surprised that that was in there. If expanding the MPT to the West University neighborhood was supposed to improve quality of life and reduce negative behaviors, I would say it's failed miserably, because read the statistics, owner occupancy is 1%, the lowest that I've heard of almost anywhere in the United States. 15% of the total crime in Eugene happens in that area, and in the last five years, crimes increased two and a half percent. So I would say that if that was in fact the, one of the justifications for MPTs, I think it's failed pretty miserably.
Mike?
Thank you to all who've worked on this. It's very good work, and some of these questions are difficult. The issue of the social host and liability issues, I've been working on since I was in student government in the 80s, when it first started becoming the liability question, specifically becoming a kind of an issue. And so I know it's a thorny, it's a thorny discussion to have, but it occurs to me that we're not the only university community in the country, and I wonder, how much have we looked at other university towns, other university neighborhood areas for innovative solutions that we can frankly just copy? Have we done a lot of that?
We had the opportunity to go out to Boulder, Colorado, and where we met with universities, town and gown.
International Town Gown Association.
From all over the world, actually. We had people from Australia, and ironically, the same, they have the same problems that we have.
Right.
So.
They have buses, too. Wow, okay.
Very big buses. And one of the, really, the things that contributed to their success, to the communities that were successful, was the social host ordinance. So we can essentially copycat and plagiarize what they already have.
Oh, good, okay, that's what I was, thank you.
They kind of, they brought that back from learning about other communities.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So we're out of time, but I've got Alan and Betty in the queue, if you will.
I'm waiting.
And what?
I just wanted to say something after.
And Caitlin. Yep. So you're going to have to ask for more time, if you want more time.
We do, Stan.
Four.
Ten.
Ten?
Moved in seconded, all those in favor? Please send to Kate.
Hi.
Okay, we're in. All right, so Alan, you're next. Oh, Caitlin, I'm going to do you, sorry, Alan, I'm going to let Caitlin go first, she's been waiting for quite a while.
Yeah, I just wanted to say.
Alan, did you hear me? I'm going to let Caitlin go first, and I'll do you. All right, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, everyone's done a lot of work on this presentation, and I think there's a lot of sides represented in this. I would hope that later you would all really consider jail beds in the future and really funding those, because a lot of the issues that we're seeing here are directly caused by people who are repeating. I think that the people that aren't being able to be sent to jail. I think that the people that aren't being able to be sent to jail, even for a night, they're not learning much, they're not, they're not being in the place where they need to sit and think for a little bit, and instead they're robbing our houses, they're stealing our cars, and they're committing offenses in our neighborhoods, and everyone's suffering from it. So I hope that some other livability issues with the homeless population and repeat offenders are looked at, not just livability issues that relate to partying and students, because those are getting worse as the economy is getting more awesome.
I just want to assure you that we're looking at all of those issues, and they're, if you, if you keep up with our budget process, you'll realize how much in front of they are in those conversations. Alan, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. On the owner responsibility, accountability, and social host law, I think there needs to be a happy medium between where we are now, with there's really no accountability and some accountability, and we have tried lots and lots of different things to have this work, and there are certain houses that it just becomes a problem and a problem and a problem, and other people deal with it. I don't, I think this is a good idea, because I think it's, we need another tool, and I don't think it will be used very frequently, I think it would be the tool of last resort, but I think we've come to a place where we can't do anything about this problem without a law like this, and so some owners need to take responsibility for the property and what happens there, that's part of the deal with when you buy a house, and some don't, and often, many, many, many do, so, but we still need that tool. On the signs in the posts and partying concrete, one time I woke up on a Sunday morning and about five or six posts on my street were on the ground, missing or severely leaning over forty-five degrees, and I also know that they were all put in gravel, so I talked to the police force people, and the reason they actually do it that way, which is that they, they do it for safety reasons, if someone hits it with a car, they want it to fall over, but also cost and repairing is substantially different, so they may do it on purpose if they put it in in gravel. So I really very much appreciate the conversation and all the work that everybody's done, and especially up in town presenting this stuff, and I think this is a good start, now we have to actually get some of this stuff enacted and implemented, and I'm eager to get that going.
Betty?
Okay, I just think there should be some owner responsibility, and I know some owners do take responsibility, but there was a house in my neighborhood where the students were having huge parties and doing some damage, and I finally found out who the property manager was, and he promised that I could call him anytime, and after that, things calmed down. So I do think there, maybe not the first time, but I think it's important to have some responsibility. Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing, as we think about the campus police department, I am supportive of that, but I have still got some outstanding issues about how I feel about our council responsibility vis-à-vis having another department, and knowing that we have community members, both students and others on campus, that I feel we have responsibility for, too. I am concerned about having an auditing process or someplace that people can go to be sure that their, their civil rights are protected in this process, because we spent a lot of work on putting that in place in, in our larger community, and I worry about it not being part of what happens on, with the second department on campus, and I don't know how we'll reconcile that, but that is my concern, that we have the same protections and high quality of expectations on every level for both departments, if they exist in our community. So just wanted to express that.
Well, thank you for your comments about that. We have had an ongoing discussion on campus about, about an appeal process, and the police auditor has been very helpful in sharing the processes here in the city.
It's a really interesting thing for me to feel, because I think, and I feel like all of us should feel that way, is that when you're the counselors for Eugene, you feel like you're the counselor for Eugene, and the campus, it resides in our community, so you don't give up your feeling of responsibility for everybody who's here, even though we have our separate parameters, so it's just something I, actually, this morning, ironically, I had an interview with the editor of the Emerald, and these kinds of things came up in that conversation, and one of the things that I would express to him, because I feel really strongly about it, is that I actually don't view our students as temporary. I view them as members of our community, and they're always here, there are twenty-three thousand of our, of our community members, many of them reside here for four years, which is as long as other people reside in other parts of the community. I realize there's a certain difference in how they, people can view yourself as a student, as a part, vis-à-vis coming here for other purposes, but I think it's really important all the time for us to recognize students as, as members of our community, and all that they do to give to our community, we have these challenges of the interface, but in fact, we rely on our students to provide all kinds of services all over our, our community, amazing amount of charrettes and other kinds of things that help us with our planning processes, that help us on many, many fronts, so I, well, I want us to wrestle, as we are, with these challenges for how we all live together in this community, I really want our students to feel that they are a welcome and positive addition to our community as well, so.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Because I feel that the U of O Lake community and Northwest Christian College are really a bright spot in our community, there's a lot of vibrancy and activity and life, and it's, we've grown, the area's really grown, Mupti, I'm sure has its issues, and we've never used it, and whether it should continue there, I don't know, but it's cleaned up a lot of substandard housing in the West University neighborhood, and it's brought a lot of students with its problems that we need to address moving forward, but it's, we see it as good that our students are living near campus, and we hope moving forward that it is a village effort, and I'm quite confident that we'll come out with something.
Thank you all very much for being here and for the extra ten minutes to finish up the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for-